At 7:00 PM, would Councilmember Fabian lead us in the pledge, please?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Here.
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 I'm present. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmembers Christensen and Heiser from tonight's meeting.
Your Honor, I'd make the motion to excuse both Christensen and Heiser.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. I declare that we have a quorum present, approval of the agenda. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number six is Riverton Water Supply Project Discussion, Pressure Zone Four, Project Easement, Mountain View Water Users, and Cowboy Lane Water Line.
Your Honor, I will start off, just give an overview, and then I'll turn some time over to Dawn to go into more detail. But we're here to talk about three different things, but they're all interconnected. So the Pressure Zone Four Project Easement is the section, we're in Phase Three right now with the booster pumps and with the tank. Phase Four is then to connect that up and go west and then down through the Mountain View Water District and connect up to Riverview. And you'll see with your attachments that there's actually a map in there that shows what that, the whole plan is, or it actually starts the plan with even our Phase Two, wasn't it? Or Three?
Phase One.
Phase One?
One, two, and three.
Yeah, one, two, and three. So we'll talk about that. The Mountain View Water Users Agreement that's included in there was supplied to us by the Mountain View Water Users Association. Really, I don't think we need to go into great detail with that unless you have specific concerns or questions as we talk with them. As I reviewed it, I have a lot of highlights and a lot of questions to ask. And I think before it ever reaches council, I can work out a lot of those things before we even have to discuss it. But really, it's kind of premature in the fact that we don't even have a water line down there yet and probably won't for some time. So why hash over an agreement that may be a couple years down the road? And then finally is the Cowboy Lane Water Line, and that's related to Pressure Four, the easements that are required to obtain from the tribe to go down to Mountain View Water Users and down to Riverview. One thing that they had asked for is that we put in a water line that goes on Cowboy Lane that hooks up those individuals up there because their wells are contaminated. That's at a price of about $350,000 is what the engineers estimate is on that. We have not budgeted for that. We talked about it in our capital project this last year, but we just don't have enough money in relation to we have all these other water projects going at the same time. So those are the three things that we're going to be going over. Feel free to interrupt or ask questions. I'm going to turn it over to Dawn, and she's going to go through the details of it. And maybe even go back before Phase Four, just to kind of give an overview of this whole Riverton Water Supply Project.
Thank you. Hello. This project was brought about by a Level Two study with the Wyoming Water Development Commission. They have three phases, three levels of studies that they fund. The Level One is just a master plan. It kind of gives you an overview of how you want to go and how you want your future water system to work. Level Two is where it actually concentrates on a specific area, and they do a little bit more planning and start doing some preliminary design. They start doing cost estimates, preliminary cost estimates. And once that is completed, then they go into the Level Three, which is construction. And that's where we're at now. We received a $9.2 million grant for this project based on the Level Two cost estimates. Unfortunately, there was an error in that. That was not discovered until we actually had already bid out two phases of this project, which brought us up to the tank and the booster stations up there on Airport Road. At this point, the contracts we have currently let with all of the contractors will take us to the maximum amount of money that we have funded from WWDC. In order to go on to Phase, the Pressure Zone Four Phase, we will have to go back to the WWDC and request more money. There was quite an error in the cost estimates. That wasn't, like I said, wasn't discovered till later. We have constructed Phase One, which is the transmission line that goes from the water plant all the way to the tank. It is not hooked up yet. Phase Two hooked up the source with the tank and the booster stations. Those have to be completed before we actually run water in that transmission line. WWDC also will not fund distribution lines. And the difference between transmission and distribution lines, the transmission lines are basically going from a source to the plant. The distribution lines are where we actually feed off, have taps into for services, and feed off to houses. And they will not fund transmission, uh, distribution lines. Like Stephen said, as part of Phase Two, Three, which is the Pressure Zone Four Phase, we are going to go through a lot of, about 1,000 feet of tribal lands that we will need to obtain easements for. Before the WWDC will allow you to bid, to start advertising for bid, we have to get an opinion of title from the city attorney that says, yes, we've got all the easements in place. We can go ahead and get this constructed. We have all permissions in order to do that. So we will have to have easements in place with the tribes in order to, before we can do the construction of that project. The Mountain Home Water District, or Mountain View Water District, they had approached WWDC about constructing a new well. And at that time, the city was in the middle of this study with the 9.2 that was leading up to the $9.2 million. And WWDC said, no, we're not necessarily going to fund you one because we're spending all this money with Riverton to run a water line right by your, right by your district. So we're not going to give you any money. We suggest you go to the city and see if you can work out an agreement. So this district came to the city, and we've been in contact and negotiations with them. The Cowboy Lane, like Stephen said, you know, we were approached by some of the people that live up there because of the contamination of their wells. It's a bacteria that is not, that you cannot get rid of. So a lot of those folks are hauling their water. And so they knew that we were putting the transmission line close to their, their properties, and we're wondering if we could, they could tie in. And I think that's, I think that's about it.
And I think that the question is not if they can tie in, it's who will pay for their tying in is the big issue. I don't think we would be certainly opposed if they said, hey, can we run a water line down and tie in your line? I don't think we would be opposed at all to that. But it's just a question of who's going to pay for putting that line in. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right, Your Honor. Because we have, we have to make up, when we go to WWDC, we have to make up, it's a two-thirds they pay for and a third we have to pay for. And so that would be a third. And then obviously, in order, in order to get the easements from the tribe, they are stating to us that we have to do the Cowboy Lane. So they are connected together. Mr. Erbikite went in front of that joint council, and that's what they asked for, is that we do the Cowboy Lane. So then you come back to, well, what do we need to really do? How important is this project in the Phase Four? And really, what it does is it ties in that line to Riverview and makes, makes our whole system looped, which you never like dead-end lines because if something goes awry, then you've got issues. And sometimes you have issues with flushing because of a dead-end line. So it is beneficial to the city, but it's not critical in the fact of the things we're doing right now are going to help feed the Job Corps and pressure areas, other places, and storage tanks for the whole community. But this Phase Four is, I guess, a thing that is useful and we probably need to do it, but we're not on the time crunch. And now we're getting pressure from two different organizations to have a time crunch. The tribes would like this Cowboy Lane done right away. And they, they have stated that we have made some sort of verbal agreement with them stating that we have to do that. And, and then from Mountain View, they're, they're giving us this, this agreement to sign up for this. And they would just be, we'd be emergency water for them, so that we'd have a master meter. Our responsibility would end once the water left that master meter and went into their system, and then they would have to deal with that. But those are some of the issues that we have to deal with. And I was hoping there was going to be more people. I, people told me there was going to be mobs of people here to hear to talk about, not only from the Cowboy Lane issue, but also from the tribal issue of, you know, Cowboy Lane. What are we going to do about that?
It was my understanding there was supposed to be a tribal representative here. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Stephen? So as I read through the packet, it appears that the tribes are stating that the easement we got for work that's already been completed was not actually an appropriate easement. Is that?
That is, Your Honor, that is up for discussion in the fact of, that what I put in front of you is from the Northern Arapaho Tribe, and it states that it's a license. And it's signed by the Northern Arapaho Tribe along with the Northern Arapaho Tribal Housing that was back in May of 2010. The lady that I was discussing this with was Glenda Waschke, and she kind of deals with easements, and she's also, lives up on Cowboy Lane. And she stated to me that she doesn't believe that's true. She believes this is joint tribe lands. It's not just Arapaho, and therefore you have to have permission from both, from the Joint Tribal Council to do those type of things. So, so here we have a pipe that's in the ground already. And we're not sure exactly if it's, if we have legitimate or not. I mean, we, we think we do, but from her perspective, we don't. And that's why I kind of brought Rick here, just in case there was any, on illegal aspects of... I was expecting a big crowd, like you said, some people to talk to.
And it was, at my encouragement as well, that we asked Rick to come this evening, and we appreciate that. So in case there were any questions of legal nature, this is something that I think potentially has some serious ramifications, you know, in the area. And as we continue on with this project, that we want to make sure that, that we're all singing from the same hymnal, as it were. And inasmuch as we have our meetings televised and whatnot, it was an opportunity to let the public as well know where we're at on it, because it will impact a lot of people. So thank you for coming this evening, Rick.
Can we get, what's your opinion? I mean, I'm interested.
Can you use the microphone, please, Rick?
I think it depends on the status of the ownership of the property. Obviously, if both tribes have an ownership interest as co-tenants, one can't grant an easement without the other, but, or a license or anything else. When we received the license, the engineering firm had done the background. And packet, there's their map that shows that it's, that the land is owned by Northern Arapaho Limited Partnership. That was a partnership between the tribes and the housing. If that's the case, and that is the owner, then the license that was granted certainly is valid. We did talk to, Stephen and I talked to the engineering firm today. They seem to be rather up on it. They indicated that they had done the research on it, and I don't know the exact acronym, but it's the Tribal Title Office is where they finally obtained the actual ownership of this property. So I guess at this point, until the city is presented with something else that would show that this is not owned by this limited partnership, but rather is tribal lands, I think it's a valid license.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Who was, who was the engineer that prepared the first estimate?
The Level Two estimate, Your Honor? That would Ben Keller and Associates. They are the engineering firm that did the Level Two study for the city.
And how, how much short are we for to complete Phase Four?
We are, the cost estimate for Phase, for the Pressure Zone Four is the very last in your packet, and it is two point, approximately $2.8 million. They underestimated the pumping facilities by a factor of 10.
That's a pretty good miss, isn't it? When we speak of the thousand-foot of tribal ground that we need to cross, that's not off of this current. It's, it's a thousand feet into the next Phase Four, correct?
Correct. Yes, it would be, it would be west of the highway.
And then there was reference in our packet that we had in the past issued permits for exchange and 600 and some permits were the water taps. Water taps seemed a little excessive. Does that seem excessive to you, or what were you trying to prove with that?
Yeah, Your Honor, I think those were from previous agreements. That's not related to this one. Yeah, was there 600? Is that what it was? That was in the back of the...
Seemed like it was 600 and some.
Um, Your Honor, wasn't, yeah, well, I guess the way I read that, we'd, you'd calculated that that was the value of 600 taps.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's right.
They were just using that as an example.
I probably said that. I said that incorrectly.
That was, that was the value. No, the value of 600 water taps.
That's right.
And yet, also in that, the way that read, at least the way I read it, was the, the first easement and the willingness to take on Cowboy Lane would give us the, the future easement across the thousand feet.
That's right.
And so what we're, what we're really up against is how to pay for the $300,000, $350,000 pipeline to Cowboy Lane.
Yeah, Your Honor, and plus the, the third that we'd have to pay to make up the match for the Water Development Commission. They pay two-thirds of that, 2.8.
That would just be to get us the easement, right?
Yeah.
And, and there, the tribe is somewhat suggesting that we're, that we have reneged because we're not putting the Cowboy Lane water distribution in until the fourth phase. Correct?
Yeah, Your Honor, and I, like I said, I wasn't at the meeting where Mr. Erbikite attended that meeting, so I don't know what exact, but they're, they're saying that he verbalized something. And I said, is there anything in writing? Is there an agreement? Because that would have to be then adopted by the council. We, we as staff members don't have the authority to commit the city to $350,000 worth of work. And they said, well, it's, it was a verbal thing, and they wanted it done a year ago. So...
I also read in the packet that we were going to not apply in November when, when the grants were posted. We're going to wait till '14. But tonight, we were, it was explained that we can't use those for distribution. They can only be for transmission.
Correct.
And so are we to assume that we are not using that as a distribution line as we go through the Rain Tree subdivision? That is just a transmission line that's looping us? So will we have to run a separate line for transmission?
For distribution, yes, Your Honor.
For distribution?
Correct, yes.
So the true phase, and, and I truly believe, after it's explained to me, that the only big stick that the city has is water. By, by rule, if anybody gets within 200 feet of, of the sewer system, we have to tie in, correct? But we don't have that problem with water. And so I think we'd need to, and I was at that meeting when we were discussing the frog water that we have. And I, I think that possibly we might want to reevaluate that and make sure that we get proper value for that product. Instead of give away that master lease for, granted, they would only need it in emergencies. But still, that's, that's a big stick to give away.
Well, Your Honor, that's one thing we've talked about, that if, if they want it so bad and, and need it, maybe they should help fund the Cowboy Lane project. Because that would get our easements to get that water line down there to help serve them. I mean, it's easy to come to the city and say, we want to hook on to you, but we don't even have a, a water line to hook on to. And so, and it, and it comes at a cost, pretty significant cost.
And, Your Honor? We're, our water fund is where we're, we're on razor's edge. And so, you know, prudence would have us, if we had $350,000 stuck away someplace in the mattress, it would be a good spot to make this smooth up because we keep the tribe pleased, and the Cowboy Lane people would get, what they really probably need is useful water, especially when the service is right and close at hand. And we would retain that even for future use, easements to Rain Tree subdivision. So it appears to me to be a $350,000 question that is probably better spent than unspent at the moment. The question is, where does Courtney come up with it?
Yeah.
We have tapped out all of the enterprise funds? There's no movement?
Your Honor, no, we've not tapped out all the funds as of yet, but we are anticipating getting very close.
Right on. No, no surplus.
Correct.
Why don't, why don't we approach? Once again, because it is, it's not transmission, it's distribution. That's why we're not going to approach for this year for the, for grant.
No, Your Honor, the reason we're not going to go this year is because of the water fund. We've, the current projects we've got will not be completed until the middle of next summer. So that's our, we're going to wait until October of 2014 to go back and hopefully get them a little bit healthier before we move on, if we go then. We don't, I, I just kind of thought that might be it. We, I don't believe we, the staff have really actually discussed.
One question that I have also, Ms. Wilhelm, is that on the Rain Tree, there's a distribution line, I believe, that's going down that. Is that correct, or is that a transmission line?
Uh, Your Honor, that would be a transmission line.
Okay. And it, that ends down there, is that?
No, it actually ties in to an existing water line there.
Oh, I see.
That ends on Rain Tree, but it comes around on the other side.
No, I see that it runs around the outside, but, but it seems to be running parallel. Now, is that? Why is that line in there? I'm not sure. I understand if we're just trying to get it to loop around.
Your Honor, because we are also trying to loop the Rain Tree line, there is actually a water line that runs to that point in Rain Tree. So we're trying to...
Okay, so there is a line there. It just doesn't happen to show it on my...
Right, exactly. It doesn't necessarily show on this exhibit.
Okay, okay. That, that one, I, it just kind of hung down there, and I'm thinking, what the world is this thing on here for, you know, and then it dead-ends there. So thank you for clarifying that for me. I appreciate that.
Your Honor, if that's the answer, why aren't we looping through Rain Tree? Why are we picking up the additional street? It's just transmission.
Your Honor, I think because of the fact that the Mountain View Water District did come, approach the city about that, so we're making it so it would be easier to tie into them.
Where is this, where is this meter going to be that, that, will it be on Rain Tree? Is that where they're?
No, Your Honor, it would be on Mountain View Road.
Mountain View Road, okay, okay. Well, that makes sense then. Any other comments or questions?
Your Honor, I guess the other issue that we could explore, if, if you look at the cost of what we're paying for easements, it's pretty significant. We're talking about less than an acre of parcel that we're paying $350,000 for.
I agree.
That's...
For an easement?
Yeah.
We're not even paying the...
Yeah, I mean, that's a...
Figure that one out.
That's pretty substantial. I mean, we could try to go back and, but, you know, once again, it comes down to money and the fact of, you know, if we offered them a cash payment instead of building a water line. I guess the advantage of water line, if, if we could find money for that, then it wouldn't be as much off of our back. Some of it would be grant funded.
Is there, have we looked, I mean, I realize it's not all about this, but have we looked at all at what it would take to recuperate $350,000 by tapping those houses that are there?
I think it's, I think it would be a long time.
Long, yeah. I mean, I, I just, to, to me, the, that cost seems just crazy. It, it seems like, you know, maybe the tribes could meet us somewhere in the middle to make it, you know, it's, it's helpful to them, and yes, it's helpful to us, but I, you know, for what, 1.1 acre, if you include the construction easement, I would like to think you could flat out buy that land for a whole lot less than that. But maybe I don't know.
Well, even expensive property at the, at the golf course is, well, I don't know. I'm trying to think how big those lots are. You're paying about $70,000 for, what are they, 10, 15,000 square foot lot?
Two different uses though, guys.
Yeah. Well, exactly. And really, this other land is probably less in value than it would be out at the...
Yeah, easily.
And, I mean, I'm not trying to say that, I, I definitely see the, the value of tying the Cowboy Lane on. I mean, people deserve to have clean water, and I hate the thought of people that live right on the edge of my town not being able to use potable water out of, you know, at their house. That's, you know, that's really not in good conscience to me on the one hand, but yet, when you look at the finances of our city, and that's a lot of money to put out for the benefit of really not that many people. And so, like I said, I, I think we need to try to pursue some, some, meet us halfway somewhere, somehow. You know? We're glad to, to do it and to help, but it, it's going to be help, not do it. That's my opinion.
Any other comments? Councilman Baker?
So if we, if we, if we came up with a better agreement with the tribes, we already have promised them a hundred taps. And then this agreement here, to cross that corner, was another twenty. So do those twenty taps go away? If this, if this isn't any good? Oh, okay.
I believe so.
How many, how many houses are there on Cowboy Lane? I, I drive by there all the time, but I guess I haven't counted, is it like seven or eight or?
Yes, if you, um, if you look at this one, um, there are currently three, six, seven, eight, nine. There's currently eleven houses, your honor, on there, but there is also another, one, two, eight vacant lots in that flat.
Okay, and then off the reservation, there's the weed and pest shop that I'm familiar with.
And then there's Clyde Anderson that lives behind that.
Uh-huh, and, uh, so there's a couple of other people over in that neck of the woods that
Right.
might wanna tie on.
Correct.
Um, Leclerc irrigation maybe and, and, uh, the fellow that lives next door and. So there, in other words, in other words, if that was designed right, then there may be you know, expanded opportunities. And if you look at, I guess if, if you, if you look at those lots right now, each of those guys has got their own well. And, um, and so those vacant lots are probably vacant because it takes money to drill wells. And, uh, that way, those, those lots might fill. So then you'd have sixteen, twenty, maybe twenty-four people? Okay. So now we're down to what?
Fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand, fourteen thousand dollars for water supply. Does this, the building that line, does that include the taps? Does, does that include the, does that include providing the distribution lines?
Um, yes, your honor, the cost estimate did include going all the way to their house with the service.
Put the house into their service and no tap fee.
Correct.
Okay, but they still have to pay?
They would have to pay for the use.
As?
As a regular user.
At the out of city rate.
Well, and a portion of that, Councilman Baker, would be, uh, vacant lots still. So we'd only go, we'd just go to, I would assume, to curb stop?
Correct, on the vacant lots, we'd just go to a curb stop, correct.
How many of these folks are hauling water? Do you have any idea?
I, I do not, do you?
Your honor, I, I've talked to, I think there's at least two or three that are, that are hauling water.
And they're hauling probably from our water point across town?
Yeah, I'm not sure where they're hauling it from, um, I'm sure they can use some of that for irrigation purposes or outside watering, but not for human consumption.
And it is, is it just two or three wells that are contaminated, or is it everybody up there?
I was gonna say, I think from what I've understood from Mr. Urbikite, your honor, it is all the wells up there that are domestic wells. But I, that's just my understanding, I'm not, I don't know that for sure.
So, the weed and pest well passed, uh, passed, it doesn't seem to be contaminated. We oughta find that out, cause that greatly diminishes if somebody has a, a good well and doesn't want on the distribution. And we're never gonna pay for it that way, by, by people signing up to help us bring a water line in, especially in any quick timeline, so. Is there any other sources of funding that we are unaware of?
We can do the consensus, the consensus money.
Explain.
Uh, the consensus grant, which is, um.
But that doesn't come around until next year, is my understanding.
Correct, but like I, like I, um, said.
But that certainly would be something that we.
The transmission line currently doesn't have water in it, so even if we built it, we would not be able to supply water to them. Until the booster stations are installed, which isn't gonna be until next summer anyway.
What's the consensus grant?
The consensus grant is a, the money that's provided from the state to the county and then the F CAG is, decides who, what projects are awarded that money.
Mayor, what do you? That usually only amounts to about, I think, two hundred and fifty thousand, if I remember, is the maximum amount on that, so. Yes, uh.
Mayor, have, have the residents of this area explored any type of funding? Seems like to be, given that the water wells are contaminated and non-potable, located on the reservation, that this would right up the alley of the B I A Public Health Service. I wonder if independently, they have explored any funding or partial funding that source.
Your honor, when I talked to Glenda, um, she.
What is her official title, uh, Stephen? I mean, what capacity does she have with the tribes?
I don't know, she, she helps with acquiring easements for people, I don't, I, I don't really know.
Is she an attorney, do you know?
No.
Okay.
No, and she happens to live on Cowboy Lane, so she's got a vested interest in that, but, um.
Is her well bad?
Yeah, her well's bad, she's hauling water. But she did say that there is available money through health services. Uh, she says it takes about two years, and I think what happened is she, they were under the impression that this was gonna happen and we're gonna get a water line, so they didn't pursue that. And so obviously, if we come back to them and say, hey, we just don't have the money to do this, anything you can do to help out, lower that cost would help us out too.
I mean, if we can get a consensus grant and they could chip in a little bit, now we're getting a lot closer to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a lot closer.
Are they going to have to bore under that canal again?
No, your honor. They, we actually, when we were put in that transmission line, we actually stubbed out a, a line to Cowboy Lane.
I'm, I'm thinking further on the, Schedule Four.
Oh, on, um, Phase Four, yes, they are going to have to go underneath.
Re-bore then, okay.
Correct, yes, sorry, and they will have to bore the highway as well, the highway will require to be bored.
Okay. I, I think that it's, it's obvious that it's in all of our interests to, to get this completed. And it's obvious that we're all interested in completing it, uh, and we recognize that we have citizens up there that need the water and, uh, but we just don't have the finances at this time to, to make that a reality. I, I feel confident that it will happen in the future, exactly how it will happen, I don't know. But I, I do think that there's options out there, and if the tribes can come up with anything that will help us, you know, to make that happen, well, then we certainly would wanna do that. Uh, one, one thing that, that I, I did have a question about, um, was when you were talking about a distribution line from the main that we would put in, it would go clear to their home? That was figured into that cost?
Yes, your honor.
That, that's not a normal procedure, is it? Normally, it's the property owners that have to pay for the, the water tap onto the main and pay for that, so that would, it would be kind of an unusual accommodation, I would think, and which would add expense to the project.
Correct, your honor.
And I, you know?
Was there a breakout on the, uh, what, you know, a difference between just running a main line up the alley versus the cost of all the taps, connections?
Um, yes, there was a breakout on that cost. Um, if you look at the bid schedule, at the house connection with the meter installation, it looked, there was eleven that looked like they were estimating at
Thirty-three thousand.
So thirty-three thousand, or a total, your honor?
All, all, for all, all of them together was thirty-three thousand?
Yeah, correct.
So the major expense is the main line?
Correct.
Hundred and fifty-four thousand, so line itself. Would that be, uh, thought to go in with a smaller line?
I think everything would, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, D E Q regulations, as this is going to be, um, a single feed, it won't be a loop system, D E Q regulations require an eight inch line.
And I think that's the direction that we're all anticipating the growth of Riverton is going to be, so we wanna get as large a line out that direction as possible, I would assume. I don't know, that's what I'd always heard, that all of the growth is going to be out north, so.
Well, this transmission line would be on the west side of the canal again, and short of another boring, we'd have a hard time looping it.
Right, are you talking about the Cowboy Lane distribution line, is that which one you're talking about? Yeah, correct.
And, and if that's a regulation, that eight inch line is required, then that's, you know, not a choice. It would be somewhat savings, I don't know that, um, there are hydrants on that line, and they would probably function under a six inch line. They have some six inch. There is some six inch line in there, but it's very little.
And those are the leads that will go from the eight inch line to the hydrant? That's what that.
Well, I guess that's a moot point if we need to.
Hundred and forty-five feet, so. Yeah, that's not much. About twenty feet each one of them, got seven hydrants.
And it's my understanding, based on the conversation that we're having currently with the tribes, that basically Phase Four can't happen unless this gets done, right?
Correct, your honor.
And there's no other potential locations for easements or anything like that that we could explore?
No, your honor, if you look at the figure one, they basically own both sides of that area that we're planning on coming out of the tank with.
We're gonna do it one way or the other. However, not gonna do Phase Four, one or the other.
Could you loop, um, could you lose, loop transmission by dropping lower into, um, into the valley across from the cemetery or some other location? We'd lose too much of the other project.
I know this, um, location was, was, um, part of a, just, was part of a modeling, and this was the best location for that transmission line. That's how it was designed.
And I really feel that, that we're going to be able to work this out, you know, with the tribes, I don't, it's a little bit of a hiccup right now, but, you know, and for the people that are living up there on Cowboy Lane with, without good potable water and they're having to haul, it's more than a hiccup, I recognize that, but, um, I, I can envision that, that, um, this problem is something that we would wanna redesign it a completely different direction for three hundred thousand dollars. The design costs would far exceed that, and so I, you know, we're, uh, we're gonna have to do some more talking, I think. Anyway. Do you have any observations, Mr. Weaver?
Nah. No, I, I think we're just gonna have to wait it out and, and see if we can come up with some additional monies and see if the tribe is willing to help, uh. And I think I need to talk to someone at the tribe, because Glenda seems to be the one that always calls me and I don't, I don't know what.
Disappointed she's not here this evening.
Yeah, I mean, they talked about Patrick Goggles showing up and several other people from the tribe. Um, since this agreement was with the housing, but we don't, we don't have any.
Maybe it's not as big a problem as we're concerned about, so, I don't know.
The other thing that I would just say, we, I think we do need to explore possibly the homeowners being part of the process too, I mean, any other line that we put in. Homeowners get to participate financially as well, and I don't see why we should immediately exclude that possibility.
I agree.
When, when will there be water in that twenty-four inch line from our water plant to the two million gallon tank?
Uh, your honor, we need to install the pump, the booster stations. And at this time, that project, um, there is a long lead time on those, they're a prepackaged system, and we actually don't even have those yet. The contractor, I believe, is expecting them to be delivered soon, it's my understanding, they are actually in transit. But it's gonna take him, it's gonna take him, I would say, six months to install those and get all the yard piping hooked up and everything, so we're looking until spring of next year.
Okay, now the airport road will be open tomorrow, is my understanding.
Correct, they were backfilling the line, yes.
Okay, I was up there this afternoon, and they were digging around a six inch gas line very delicately, so, um, I appreciated that.
Your honor, is there any, anybody that read through the agreement with, uh, Mountain View Water District, is there any comments or directions that you want me to proceed forward in with this? I frankly think there's a lot of information in here that we don't even really need in there. If we just make a blank, blanket statement at the very beginning stating that our responsibility ends after the, cause it seems like there's a lot of stuff put in there that we're not gonna get involved in this and that, and I don't think we really need to even mention those in agreement, we just say, we'll sta, we'll put in a master meter, and our responsibility from thereforth is, is then on Mountain View.
There, there was one part on it, under seven C, says the district agrees that it will not draw more than two hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day from the city system. Two hundred and fifty thousand per day, that's seven point five million gallons a month.
That's a lot.
That's a lot of water, that's filling up that two million gallon tank over three times per month. And I, I, I don't know. Maybe they need that much water down there, I don't know, but that seemed like an awfully lot to me.
Not on an emergency basis. And I think you gotta clarify, what are we doing there? Are we the emergency basis, or is this truly water service?
Well, your honor, it, it may start off as emergency, but as soon as their wells go bad, it may be permanent.
And I, I guess that's where I, where I'm at, I, I don't think the city has much clout, uh, when it comes to the other amenities, but they do with water. And we, I would suggest we may revisit that and, and, um, see if that's something that we really do wanna give away as cheaply as we have suggested in the past.
Or perhaps we could set some sort of an agreement in there that if their average daily water consumption goes above X for X amount of time, then they agree to begin annexation proceedings, and I, I, ultimately, that's our, water is the reason why people ultimately are annexed into the city and. I mean, if I could have a offline meter that I could use all the city water I wanted to and never be annexed into the city, may not seem like a bad, bad idea.
Whose meter is that going to be? Will that be the city's meter, or will that be their meter, or?
I think it'd be the, I believe it would be the city's meter.
Okay, it doesn't seem. Okay, it doesn't seem to be very clear there, just say that it'll, it'll be installed, but it never defines who's actually has the ownership of the meter, and I was just kinda curious about that. Then, under eleven, and, and these may be, you know, just points based on my ignorance more than anything, but under eleven, it says city's right to discontinue service, upon ninety-six hours notice, the city may cease to provide water to the district at any time when, in the opinion of the city, conditions in the district may harm the city's municipal water system. Well, I would hope that we wouldn't wait ninety-six hours if we know that there's a problem that's potentially jeopardizing our water system, you know, I, I would think that it would be shut down as soon as that is recognized, but that's...
Well, it doesn't seem like that's the only reason to terminate, just that reason alone, there may be others that come up, we should have the ability to.
You know, I mean, just, there's things like that, that just as a layperson, I, uh, you have to ask yourself.
All the houses in the city have, uh, check valves, all the newer houses in the city have check valves, which prevent contamination and flowback, and so, you don't have that in that subdivision, so once you tie, that was explained to us last time we discussed that, once we tie onto that system, and I, I think that's part of the problem, I realize this agreement says that they'll take over responsibility after the meter, but, um, if we over-pressurize that system, you know, there, there's just all sorts of problems that could, could happen to that, that aged system, that introduction of water under higher pressures could cause, and, um, you know, we could cause more problems than we solve.
Yeah, and, Your Honor, we would have a backflow device at that meter too, and to protect our system, so that, that back siphonage couldn't occur.
There's only going to be one connection, is that my understanding?
Correct, Your Honor.
Okay, in, in one part here, uh, I was reading, and it kept using the, the plural, that they're talking about, under, uh, three B, uh, the board of the district has received a copy of the applicable sections of the Riverton Municipal Code concerning permits, inspections, requirements, and represents that it will direct that its project engineer and employees familiarize themselves with the relevant R M C provisions with respect to connections to the city, and then under C, approval of the connections to the city system, and so, I'm wondering if we're suggesting that we're going to be allowing more connections onto this main line somewhere in there, but...
No, Your Honor, those are all good points, and like I said, if you continue reading through this, and you see other things that are a concern, please email those to me, and I'll, when we have discussions with them, we can bring up all these questions and get them answered.
Okay. Is there any other issues on the water supply project at this time? Did you have anything further, Rick, that you wanna share with, okay? Okay, I guess at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the work session?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.